Welcome to the discussion panel meeting. My name is Michael White. I am the president and vice president of the moderator. I would particularly welcome any voters who are attending the panel meeting for the first time. How many of you are at your first panel meeting? I see a few. Thank you for coming. I would like to share some opening words that many elected moderators use because it's the right frame of mind. We come together in a simple settlement as a community in a tradition that is older than our state itself. We come together to make decisions about our community. As we deliberate, let us advocate for our positions but not any expenses above us. Let us remember that there is a big difference between saying "I am right" and saying "I believe I am right". That our neighbors with whom we disagree are good people with hopes to create desirable outcomes. And that caring for each other in this community is more important than any differences we may have. So all seating matters. Fire regulations prohibit standing or sitting in corridors, aisles, or exits. Please take note of the emergency exits near you. The meeting is being recorded by CCTV and will be available for viewing later. I believe that WAMC is also recording the meeting. And please turn off your cell phone or monitors. On stage are the mayor, Senator Wessina, our manager Mark Gorhensky, and counsel David Ness. I will briefly explain some of the procedure for meeting tonight. The town meeting is governed by the Constitution and general laws of Massachusetts, charter of private laws of the Confederate government, and Town Meeting Time is the reference guide for management of the procedure. Only registered voters of straight voting to vote. Persons who are not currently voting in voters may address the town meeting only with the special permission of the moderator, one non-voter has requested and has been granted permission to address this meeting. Seats down here in the front are for the non-voters who are in full, fully, overcloset seats. I believe you are not in the meeting overcloset, so exit quickly.
So does that mean I can't sit here?
Motion and amendments must be in writing and presented to the library. If you wish to make a motion or to speak on an amendment, go to the area by the microphone. If you are prepared to speak when your turn comes, please state your name and voting address, then wait to be recognized by the moderator. If a motion is made and seconded, the person who makes the motion will normally be recognized to speak first and support it. You may speak once on a motion for a time now to exceed three minutes. You be sure we stay on track. I'm going to use a timer on the podium. It will turn yellow when thirty seconds remain and will turn red if the timer expires. The moderator has discretion to grant permission for an initial presentation of the form of the three minutes, and he grants time for response as appropriate. Questions should be addressed to the moderator. The moderator will direct the questions to appropriate individuals to respond. Statements should be addressed to the pending motion after other speakers. Please be considered and do not repeat points that have been made by previous speakers, just speaking in desired manners by counting votes, not by counting speakers. If the debate becomes too repetitive, the moderator will reduce the time for each speaker. Because we have now adopted a new bylaw, a motion to recall the question that is to end the debate and move directly to the vote on the pending matter is not in order until every voter who wishes to speak has had an opportunity to be heard. Such a motion must be made if you are fit to that, like any other motion, from the microphone in the hall after the speaker is recognized. A long colored card has been issued to each voter. Use that card to vote by toe-toe hands and to read the debatory if necessary. If we need to count the vote by toe-toe hands, a towel has been assigned to each section of the room. The tellers will report their numbers from the microphone. This is an optique. We'll see if it works if we have to use it. And we will tell them what they are staging to give to the answer by turn. A seven color ballot with yes and no has been issued to each voter in case there is a vote by seat for ballot. If a vote by seat for ballot is called for, the moderator will specify which color it is.
Hey, Diego.
Changing events in the voting and motion is not allowed in a incidental motion during the debate of the motion. And incidental motion requires a majority vote. In the event of a tie vote, the motion will fail. The moderator will not exercise a cast vote. By way of motion for reconsideration of a vote made before it is only debated within fifteen minutes after the announcement of the result of the vote. I think that's unlikely in this meeting because if they had only one matter, it was to reach out for votes. When you end the meeting this morning, you received a copy of the town meeting warrant. It describes some matters of concern and added to this meeting. There is a home rule that applied and we therefore expect to be heard at this time. Couple of formalities. Is there a motion to dispense with the reading of the warrant?
Yes.
Is there a motion? Some move? Somebody move again? Some move? Any second? And all in favor? Both? Another text? To dispense with the reading of the warrant. And we'll proceed to Article 1 of the town meeting board. Is there a motion?
Yes.
Name the members, please.
Janelle Manoa, 135 West Avenue. I'm the petitioner of the home rule petition. Mr. Moderator, I believe that the town present the home rule petition to the general court. The town representatives in the general court are requested to immediately introduce legislation as set forth in warrant Article 1, and ask that the general court enact such legislation further that the general court may make constructive changes in the text thereof as may be necessary or advisable to accomplish the intent of this proposed legislation in order to secure its passage.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. The motion is to submit a home rule petition asking for legislation in the form provided in the warrant following the label "enact concerning horse racing through the non-creators" and the following paragraphs. Do you have a presentation? I believe you do.
Yes, I do.
And you're going to be accompanied by Barbara Kellogg, who is permitted to speak for this year's one of your oral lectures. You have five minutes.
Good evening. I'm glad to be gathered here with my fellow Great Barrington citizens. We are here on this cold December night to vote on sending the home rule petition through to our legislators to ensure that the Great Barrington citizens have a right to vote on whether commercial horse racing comes to our town. We did not come to the decision of a petition to a special town meeting impulsively or prematurely. This meeting is a culmination of a lengthy process of fact gathering, dialogue with citizens, consultation with attorneys, legislators, and concerted efforts to work with our select board on issues since July of this year. During that time, countless citizens shared their concerns with us about commercial horse racing. Those concerns include traffic and infrastructure, environmental and animal welfare, gambling and economics, and the democratic process being thwarted by the legislation in Boston. During our research, it was shown that pending bills Senate 101 and House 13, if ratified, would strip GB citizens of a right to vote on horse racing in our town. With that knowledge, we sought counsel on the home rule petition as a vehicle to ensure the right of the people to vote under law, under current law, excuse me, pending law, or any other bill that may become law. We brought this vehicle to our senator and select board and asked them to take action on ensuring that right. We received no firm confirmation from our representatives that actions were being taken to ensure that right. We then understood the way in which that right could be guaranteed was to have the citizens demand the right to vote on horse racing. The petition calling for a special town meeting received four hundred and seven registered GB voter signatures in just over six weeks' time. The will of the people has been made clear. Thank you for this time to speak. Barbara?
To be clear, tonight is not a vote on whether horse racing is coming to Great Barrington. Your yes vote tonight directs your state legislators to file this legislation that's in front of you in the warrant article. The article gives the voters of Great Barrington local control over the question of whether commercial horse racing can come to this town. Massachusetts towns have limited powers under state law. Home rule petitions such as this one are the process by which a town requests that the legislature give it certain powers that it does not otherwise have. In Great Barrington, that request must come from town meeting, and that's why we're here tonight. For horse racing, the state dictates when, where, and how racing can be conducted and what local control is possible. The state controls the minimum number of racing days per year for each and every horse racing license. There is pending legislation at the State House now that provides that if a commercial horse racing license was ever granted in a town, racing can be conducted in that town without any further local vote or approval. That directly affects Great Barrington because commercial racing licenses were issued for racing here in 1997 and 98, although the license for 1999 was returned and any authority for commercial racing ended at that time. No matter what other laws might pass in the state level, this home rule petition requires that town voters must approve horse racing at an annual town meeting, then confirm that in election before racing could ever return here. A yes vote tonight will require Great Barrington's state legislators to present and champion this legislation on Beacon Hill. Even if they fail to get this legislation passed, your yes vote tonight will give a clear message to the entire legislature, to the select court, and to the gaming commission, which is the state licensing authority, that the citizens of Great Barrington demand local control by citizen vote on horse racing. Thank you.
Is there further to discuss? If you're a little faster, if you don't applaud, if you don't agree with me. Is there any further to make on this? Hold the microphone, please. There is somebody young. Please, if you think you might want to say something, you can line up. If you don't, that's okay. If you got your best, it's not a problem.
My name is Lee Davis. I'm a member of the Great Barrington Select Board. I'm speaking as a citizen tonight. I just wanted to mention a few things. Back in April, when I was selected onto the select board, I asked a few questions about what was happening in Great Barrington and some things that were happening in terms of in the pipeline and issues and projects. And one of the questions I asked was what's happening with fairgrounds. And like so many of you, I met a few articles.
Speakers will address the moderator, please. Speakers will address the moderator.
Sorry, sorry, Michael. And the fairgrounds came up. And I started to do some research on where we were. And this was April, May, June, July, and approached the select board with some concerns about Senate Bill 101. And the main concern that I saw, that I brought to the select board in July and August, was that our power as a community was being taken away because our right to vote on this very, very important issue of whether horse racing would return to this community was being taken away by a loophole in this legislation that was being proposed. And this struck a chord. And tonight is really about the power of this community. It's about, you know, us taking the destiny into our own hands and showing any outside interest that we actually care, that we're actually engaged, and we will stand up for our rights. So I really reached out to everyone tonight and just remember that it's a power, it's a vote of the people, and it's a vote for Great Barrington. And it's to show them that we are in control of our destiny. We want to be in control. And this is not about horse racing. It's about local control. It's about us taking the destiny of this community into our hands. So I really urge everyone to vote yes tonight and just show Boston, show any outside interest that might come, that we are engaged and we're strong and we believe in ourselves and we want to determine our own destiny. Thank you.
Laura Keefner, I live at 7 Great Street. I live right next to the fairgrounds. And right now, it's a dump. Some folk now wants to come in and spend up to $20 million to fix it up. I don't see why people have a problem with that. I'd really, I'd really like to know how many people in this building right now actually attended the fair? How many of you actually?
Speakers will address the top of the panel.
Sorry, sorry. Not many, okay? First of all, they want to fix up the fairgrounds. I don't know about you, but I've lived next to it for 25 years. It's a dump. The owner that has it now doesn't do anything unless he gets great help. As far as traffic goes, it's busy down there anyway. But has anybody here also been to an OTB parlor? There's maybe five cars a day there. There's not that many. They're asking for maybe thirty days of horse racing. Horse racing used to be a great thing in this town. The fair used to be a great thing. People would park cars on their lawn. They'd make money to put towards their absorbent taxes that we now have. It's business for motels, for stores, for contractors that are going to help fix up this fairgrounds. And as far as the horses go, Saratoga, I got a shirt on. Saratoga's been doing this for 150 years. Barrington did it for how many years? And as far as the horses that do die, someone just stood here and said this is not about the horse racing. That's bull. It is. This is about the horse racing. And as far as the animals that do die, how many of you go and protest at a kill shelter where the thousands and hundreds of thousands of animals are killed each year? You don't protest that, but you're protesting horse racing, which I know I'm going to get a boon on this one, but a lot of these horses are better taken care of than you or I. Yeah, yeah.
Please respect the speakers.
I'd also like to know how many people in this building now have lived here more than ten years or have not lived here more than ten years? It is relative. It is relative relevant because you don't know what it was like back when the fair was here. It's good for this town. And just, I know we're barking up a tree here, and this is going to pass with flying colors, and it's going to go before the town meeting next year. But there are some old folks in here, the old people of old Great Barrington, who want our voice heard too, not just your voice. We do matter. We do matter. Not just you people that have come here and bought second homes or you've just lived here less than ten years. I want that fairgrounds fixed up. It's a dump. How can you pull out a big Y and look at that mess and not think that needs to be fixed up? If they want to sink $20 million into this, and if it fails, it fails. They were out the money. We're on the good end of that because we get the fairgrounds fixed up.
Thank you.
Lika Noloski, thank you, girl. I respect the good memories of residents who enjoyed the old agricultural fair. Lee, my husband and I also have good memories of taking our young son there. I was there at that time. But let's recognize that the model for a Boston-based gambling business may be more like Yonkers Raceway, for example, than a modern version of the agricultural fair. I remember Yonkers Raceway because my family lived near there. And it meant trying to arrange our lives so we weren't caught up in the traffic coming and going from the racetrack. It meant during racing season, there was a parking ban, and we couldn't even park in front of our own house. We couldn't have guests without farming them out to other people's driveways. It meant avoid going to shops and restaurants when the races were on because the racetrack had their own restaurants and things were just really busy there because of the traffic. It meant hearing distressing stories from friends who had friends working at the track. And there were stories of doping. There were stories of threats, and there were stories of bribery. Racing and gambling brings questionable events to our community. Now, Yonkers Raceway is even worse for nearby residents. They have five days of racing year-round every week. And they have a casino. That's a cross between a racetrack and a casino, but it has 5,000 flat machines and other electronics. They don't hire many people. Everything is electronic. So let's not talk about the jobs there. Could something like that happen here? Could that be the eventual game plan? Who knows? It is a risk. Now, do you remember the great promises from other business people about big investments in the old fire station? It's easy for developers to make attractive proposals. Well, as we've seen and learned the hard way, once approved, the developers can make major changes or do nothing at all for quite a while. Then we're stuck with that. So let's be really cautious about the plan supposedly for only a few racing days per year, especially when the pending state legislation allows up to 60 days per year. Keep your eye on what's the legislation. The rest of it is just promises. So also, let's think positively. What top three things do you think would improve life in Great Barrington? Would horse racing and Boston-based gambling be one of your top priorities?
Say the list of quickly.
No, I'm not going to list them. I'm going to say that I served on the town economic development committee.
I can buy you three minutes.
And I haven't heard anyone there promoting horse racing or gambling as an economic development solution for our town. There are other solutions like worker-owner businesses, helping retired business owners get financing so their employees can take over their businesses. That's something constructive. That's something that will support our community spirit and not send our money outside the community. So please join with me and vote yes on this resolution.
Carol Deal, 224 Grove Street, Great Barrington. This is based on a letter that Sharon Gregory wrote to the editor. Let's ask, what are the expected town revenues versus what we would give up? We know our local taxes from hotels and restaurants and motor vehicle licenses generate $3 million annually. This is compared against our town's budget of around $10 million, the rest of which is tax collecting for the school. So these local revenues already help offset our real estate taxes, and it is improving. How much would horse racing generate in taxes for the town? It appears that the proposed Senate resolution would give us a tiny portion of GB's on-track revenues. If racing generated $10 million, we'd get $35,000, a drop in the bucket of our budget. The real revenues from commercial horse racing would be from off-track betting run out of simulcast locations across the state. Nothing would benefit GB. Some people ask, how about real estate taxes? Well, Sterling Suffolk Corporation would be renting from a nonprofit, the GB Fairgrounds. Who knows what the deal would be? So what's in it for Great Barrington? How much would we lose? How much more clogs traffic during our peak tourist season, requiring more police staff? The hotels say they're already filled to capacity during peak season. So how would they benefit? Will the increased traffic deter diners for local restaurants? Local merchants complained during those two years of horse racing that they suffered from people avoiding downtown. Will there be more Department of Public Service expenses related to waste cleanup and monitoring? The town has developed enviable assets in its green-based economy. Let's not trade our smart-worth assets to enhance East Boston's gambling business. Even the money makes no sense.
Thank you. Thanks.
Matthew Rubin, 461 Old Southbridge Road, and I own business at 264 Main Street. It's stunning to me, bizarre, surreal, that in 2020, we are considering the return of a scourge of horse racing to this town. The Berkshire Edge, the Eagle Eye thing, and others who's reporting on the issues surrounding the return of horse racing, which I think has been smart, and balanced, and informative, insist on including with every article a dreamy, colorized, pastel scene of the old fairgrounds with fringy serries and puffy striped awnings, little girls in pretty dresses, eating candy floss or whatever. But let's be clear, that's not what we're talking about here. Horse racing is cruel. Even at Santa Anita and Churchill Downs in Saratoga and the other storied tracks with their prized thoroughbreds and colorful soaps and jaunty hats and mint juleps, horses die by the dozens, drugged until their bodies break for our amusement. And this is no Saratoga. This is a third-rate bankrupt operation who couldn't even keep their own track alive, but has found a willing stooge with horrible, derelict fairground in a little, deep New England town with convenient permit so that they can prop up their simulcast business, or whatever it's called, which seems to require, even though it's basically a video game, imperiling the life of actual horses. In our little town, I see no benefit to this plan, just animal abuse and traffic and the propping up of an industry that is dying everywhere. And whatever local revenues come of it, whatever hard-earned money gambled away, will be blood money. It's an insult and disrespectful to our town, and it has to be stopped. Please vote yes. Thank you.
I'm a little confused.
Name the members, please.
Dr. Cindy H. Klein, 656 South Eggmont Road, Great Barrington. And as I mentioned, I'm a little confused because most of the people are talking about the pros and the cons of horse racing. And I thought we were here to make sure that we were concerned about home rule. Whether you are a real supporter, you still have to vote on whether we are in charge of our own destiny here. If you're against horse racing, if you're for horse racing, we still have to decide on the home rule issue, which I thought was the reason for this meeting. All the other discussions will come at a later meeting. Let's make sure we nail down that we are in charge of what happens to us. Home rule is the reason we vote yes.
I was going to say something about that. I knew that we could get into the areas of horse racing, even though that is not technically what we're talking about tonight. But bear that in mind as you continue your presentation.
Eileen Rosenfall, 39 Castle Hill, Carrington, Great Barrington. Well, I should be sitting down because that gentleman just said basically what I wanted to say, but I think it needs to be pressed. Lee Davis said it perfectly. We're thinking about how we want to control our town. You can vote any way you want to when the vote comes up for the racetrack. But this is about whether we make the decision or whether the state and businesses of the state are given a make decision. Thank you.
Thank you.
Charlotte Plutus, Hebrew Strang, Great Barrington. I'm on the other side. I'm in the east street. I've been an owner, raced up and down these roads for another part of two years. Take a little boy there. But I hear, I guess we've broken off the rest of the country to help debut a racing industry. I wonder if quite probably it's up to the racing industry to change that perception. But what we're going to vote on today, yes? It's a home rule petition. My thoughts specifically about the racing question. Because make no notes about it. That resolution says that we have to vote on any town meeting and then vote and about that. It's one of the new baronial town meetings that hack the special interests. They voted. They're going to come before town meeting. As this meeting is tonight. They'll be voted down. This is for today when we vote on and we approve. They'll come before town meeting. They'll be voted down. They'll never make it before all of the votes. They'll make it before the votes of the town meeting. There are a lot of concerns about horse racing industry. Ladies and gents, it's a very hell of a It’s a very heavily regulated industry. Horses are chopped all the time, right, they race out of it. Back, and then it gets suspended. The suspension is defined if your horse is found missing out of racing. Horses are basically those horses, right? That’s a good point, yes. Basically, those are horses. Horses die of racetrack, I think that happens. It does happen, they have to discover other reasons. Horses die of love, horses die of love. They die of desperation. They die of cancer. They’re likely to do things like they have to in the industry. Has changed, industry is what we want to improve this industry. It still hasn’t evolved on those of us. Sharon Gregory, have anything about, about some of the questions that we asked. Her analysis of the direct benefits, that’s actually a little amount that she has now that is actually more than what we count down to the Supreme, so counting down nothing is somewhat an overpriced investment. But that debt, and this, the town, just about $50 million space value. It’s not some jazz, supplies are going to be purchased. People who go to races, go to restaurants, they’re completely booked. You talk about traffic, traffic, San Francisco, San Francisco, is where money is spent. This has been a lot of people come here, Chittahoe, Fozana Ridge, the Swinacote, I know, I believe you. But listen to what he says too, a lot of what he says, a lot of questions Sharon asked at the end, I move. They have to answer. Six days racing, try six to nine. Big difference. Lot of traffic, trying marijuana shots, that’s the practice stuff.
Thank you.
My name is George Taylor, BB. I am an operator at River Hill Farms on Route 23, and I’m Route 7 writer next to the other side of railroad tracks from the Fairgrounds. Brought up the question of how long you’ve lived here. My family’s been in this town since 1830. George Taylor was my great uncle and his father, Mueller and Taylor Insurance Agency. My grandfather was the physician chief at Fairview Hospital, who was, the new building was built in 1929. I haven’t been to a town meeting in several years because everything I use, I am a conservative. Everything that I have, I used to get up for 45, more or less, years at town meetings was always defeat. Well, tonight I sent some pictures, and I said, I think I will go and see, maybe I’ll get a win. So I’m here. So I could probably, I have a 600-acre farm, I could probably sell it away to the horse people. I remember going at the fair. I remember going with a kid down there, and it was fair from 50s and 60s, and it was a far different town back then than it is now. Okay, I’m getting to my main point. The point being that this town has changed radically in as long as I’ve been here. And now we have a situation where, and also this issue of simulcasting and the mob, mafia way involvement in the fair fixing races. I’ve actually used, I used to take the manure from the Fairgrounds and spread the hypodermic needles through the manure spreader on my fields and so forth and so on from the fixed races that used to be conducted here. And yes, a lot of people made money, it was a real country fair, horse racing was exciting and so forth and so on. But now, this is a completely different town. And again, my main point is, the traffic in this town is absolutely horrendous. Why do we need another event which will choke that into town? Every day, the traffic is backed up all the way up to the SBS, the radios, the radio station, and almost all the way down to the Busta Time River on top. We don’t need any more traffic on top of everything else. So let’s vote for this issue.
I see two more speakers on the line. Resume one.
Dana Dapalito, 12 Brookshire High Street. I’m sure you’ve all heard the phrase, follow the money. Okay, the money is not coming to Great Barrington. The money is going to a shady deal, a shady corporation out of East Boston that was thrown out of East Boston. And the reason it was, was because they let their daddy horses and their manure and their drugs build up, and so that had the decomposing horses, the waste was running into their rivers. We have a river right next to the Fairgrounds, if you haven’t noticed, which we should have. And they will behave the very same way here as they did in East Boston. The money is in the gambling. We’re not allowing horse racing, we’re allowing gambling, simulcasting everywhere. That’s where the money is going, not here. They don’t care about this town. If we had horse racing 30 days this summer, 60 days this summer, I would go someplace else this summer. I would not stay here. I would never go into downtown. And I’m sure I’m not the only one, as the speaker before me said, the traffic is already very bad. We really want to exacerbate that problem for no money to us? I don’t think so. Please vote yes on this point.
Thank you. There is one more speaker.
No one else is speaking. I just wanted to say.
David Edwards, please.
Mark Cohen, Tammore Avenue, Great Barrington. I just want to encourage us to stick to the purpose of tonight’s meeting, that is to vote on the petition for home rule. We can spend the next hour or so with coming attractions of what’s going to take place in the future, but I want to get to the point of the meeting. It’s good on you.
You took some words right out of that mouth. Just to wind up your vote, I will to speak, I will call for the vote on the motion. Motion is to submit to home rule petition for the legislation that I signed on the warrant article. All votes in favor, please raise your hand. All votes opposed. Motion carries first. So we vote for the decision on the vote of this town meeting. I would like to make a motion to turn it up to voting. Do I hear a so moved?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?